I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for April 11, 2012. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fidesco.
Here.
Commissioner Pill.
Here.
Commissioner Anton.
Here.
Commissioner Fleet.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here and Chairman Richard.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you would please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have you all standing, please, if you give any testimony either for or against any item tonight, you've got to be sworn in. So if you please raise your right hand, it won't hurt. I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. And I would request that you silence any and all electronic devices. First order of business is approval of the minutes of our March 14 meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
Commissioner Anton.
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren says yes. And Commissioner Fidesco.
Yes.
And Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay, the minutes are hereby approved as presented. Under open hearing, new business. First item, planning and zoning item 12-011, Joseph and Marie Guzzo regarding the property located 217 North Grant Street for the following. A zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a detached garage over 28 feet in length and over 576 square feet in area in the R3 Single Family Detached Residence District. Sir, if you would give your name and sign in, there should be a sign-in sheet there.
Yep, I signed in. My name's Joe Guzzo. I'm at 217 North Grant. What I'm trying to do, I guess, is build a garage in the backyard. Some of you have probably been at the property and scoped things out. We're doing a little remodel project in the house, and we're turning our one-car garage into a family room. The house is two-bedroom, one-bath, small house. The kitchen was probably about as big as this podium. And so we're trying to move some walls and redesign the inside, basically. So from the day we moved into this house, we were never able to get -- we have two cars, could never get them in the garage, not even one car. We downsized from a big house to a small house. When my wife and I got married, we were living at 15 East Hidden View, which was Frank Johanneck's house. So we lived with my in-laws for a while, and now we ventured off on our own. So I got some pictures to kind of give you a little bit of an idea of what I'm trying to do. So is this thing?
Yeah, sure. Just should be working.
Magic.
Wow, look at that. Try to show this here. Okay, this is a view facing east in my backyard, all right? There's my nice two-and-a-half-car garage right there. Basically, I'm looking to build this garage to get both my cars in, my lawnmower, I've got a snow blower, I got tons of garden tools and stuff. So I'm looking to use a portion of it for storage, so I can eliminate that. And still have a little room for some storage for some of the stuff that I had in the one-car garage that we just converted. And, you know, we've acquired stuff from, you know, my parents passed away, so I acquired a bunch of stuff from their household and stuff that we got from my in-laws. So we're trying to find a place that we can kind of put it and then eventually go through it, you know? I'm, you know, my mom just passed away in November, so I'm at that point where I'm not quite ready to go through this stuff. I don't know if that makes any sense, but... So the garage is going to be built... Let me show you this. Might make a little bit more sense also in with this picture. All right, keep that in mind, that view, okay? You're going to be looking east, all right? I'm going to put it like this. So now you can kind of see. Come on now, here. Here we go. All right. So this would be facing east. The garage is going to be, there's going to be an 18-foot driveway. And then the garage is going to be 24 by 30. And we would come in off the alley for this particular thing. There is fence. Our yard is fenced in. So part of this fence that's along the south and the east, some of it I'm looking to put across the north side of this to close it off because I've got two dogs.
So any questions? Can I clarify anything? The board will probably have questions, but if you're finished with your presentation, will the public, anybody from the public speak on this issue for or against? Okay, seeing no comments, we'll close the public. Does staff have anything?
The applicant has worked with our staff to decrease the width of the driveway to avoid another variation. And he has also planned the garage specifically with regard to his neighbors and to mature landscaping on his yard. And staff has no other comments or concerns.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the commissioners. Commissioner Thomas, if you would.
Show me on the diagram there where your driveway into the garage is. You're coming off the alley?
Going to be coming off the alley. What's in green right there would be the driveway. Or yellow, I should say, I'm sorry.
Scared me. I'm seeing yellow.
It's green over here. But yeah, that would be the pad. So I would be turning, you know, either left or right depending on if I'm coming from the south or from the north.
It was Saturday when I went out and saw it. I ran into your contractor for the house.
Okay. The short little guy, yeah.
Nice car. And also talked to your neighbor to the...
South?
Yeah, south.
Okay.
And I don't have a problem with it. I like what you're doing.
Thank you.
I like what you've done to the house. You've made a small house, a little more breathing room than you're going to need storage for what's going on, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Pill.
When I visited the site and walked down to the backyard, I could see immediately why you wanted to do that. I think it's a perfect complement to what you're doing with the house. I assume it's going to be finished in a similar style and fashion and color.
Yeah.
Types that it's going to be a match set.
Mm-hmm.
And I, too, didn't see any problems with that, and I think it's a great idea. I wish you luck with this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anton.
Okay, first off, I love garages and fences. Well, I like big garages and fences, but this thing is a great idea, and I see your yard's pretty big, and you're not asking for a variance on covering the lot up with more structures. How about stormwater on that? I mean, just basic gutters, not a problem with water there ever?
Yeah, shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue.
No.
There was one little note or something, but I guess it's going to be addressed when the contractor builds the garage. I guess there's a little bit of water. Where's my little note?
Probably a drain.
Here it is. Actually, it might be easier to just show you. I don't know if you guys can... That's what you guys, or Jill, sent me. And I'm thinking that once they... Because they've braided the alley so many times, if you're standing on the alley side of the fence, you could see it's like, it got like a hill. And once they come in and put in the driveway and level it all off, I don't think there'll be a problem with it.
Okay. Well, good. Good luck with that garage.
Thank you. Wish I had more property to build something bigger.
Commissioner Van Buren.
Yes, I was also there and spoke to the contractor. Obviously, the house is being gutted. You're not living...
We're not gutting it totally, but...
But it looks pretty much like a completely redo, and I certainly understand why you'll need a garage, and I don't see any problem with your proposal.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Yeah, I looked at the property. I don't see where that'd be a problem whatsoever to put it on that site. I did have a question for staff. What's the difference between detached and attached garage as far as the square footage for this, if it was attached rather than detached?
Right, it can be larger. It would just need to meet the impervious lot.
Yeah, so what would that square footage be? So I'm just trying to compare it as to what...
There is none.
There is none? Oh, okay.
Right, you would just need to meet the lot requirement.
Well, the lot requirements, since this is within the lot requirements, I don't see where there's a problem whatsoever. Good luck.
Thank you.
And again, I was out there today talking to your contractor, looking around. You're going to pull some beautiful lilacs out of the way.
Oh, and you know, well, my wife wants to get rid of them, but I... Right now, I mean, they smell really good and they look beautiful.
Oh, they're gorgeous. They're gorgeous. I compliment you for what you're doing, and I have no problem with this whatsoever. So any further questions?
Just a comment. When you get to the findings of fact, there are two variances, but I combined the findings of fact into just one findings for you to approve for both items.
Okay, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Findings of fact for a request for a variance to allow a detached garage over 28 feet in length and over 576 square feet in area for Joseph and Marie Guzzo at 217 North Grant Street. Criteria number one: The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicants are converting an existing one-car garage into a family room and therefore propose to construct a new two-car detached garage. Applicants seek these variances as to the garage length and garage area in order to accommodate applicants' two vehicles as well as storage needs. Allowing this garage will eliminate the need for the construction of a separate storage shed upon the property. Due to the space constraints of the existing home and the conversion of the existing attached garage, the applicants cannot yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two: The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Due to the recent deaths of applicant's parents, the applicants have unique storage needs which their existing house cannot accommodate. The variances, if granted, will eliminate the need for an additional storage shed upon the property. Criteria number three: The variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The variances sought are not excessive, and the resulting lot coverage will be less than 40 percent. Construction of this proposed detached garage is not expected to generate adverse stormwater concerns for adjacent properties and will not alter the essential character of the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. All right, the findings of fact for a variance for length and square foot are hereby adopted. Under planning and zoning item 12-011, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a detached garage over 28 feet in length in the R3 Single Family Detached Residence District.
So moved.
Second. That's motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco.
Yes.
Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
Commissioner Anton.
Yes.
And Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay, and the findings of fact are for both variances, so under planning and zoning item 12-011, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a variance request to allow the construction of a detached garage over 576 square feet in area in the R3 Single Family Detached Residence District. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco.
Yes.
Mr. Pill.
Yes.
Mr. Anton.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
And Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Guzzo, you have our recommendation, and staff can tell you when you go before a committee of the whole.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck to you, sir.
Yes.
Okay, never mind. I was just checking that the two variances were combined into one motion on the agenda.
Oh.
I, for some reason, I thought they were separated into two separate items.
Okay.
Thus my initial comments.
Gotcha.
Understood. No trouble to handle, and that's separate, though. No.
Okay, next item. Planning and zoning 12-012, John Griffin of Griffin Landscaping Enterprises regarding the property located at 222 East Quincy for the following. A zoning code variance request to increase fence height. Code permits three-foot in height or chain-link fences adjacent to a street in residential districts and seven foot as proposed. Mr. Griffin? Good evening.
Good evening. Do I just really quick put my home address or the property's address?
Property address is fine.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'm just, basically, I don't know if everyone is familiar with the property over 222 East Quincy, but it was Angel Landscaping for years, and I don't know what it was before then. But I know that a few years ago, they have zoned it R5. They want to eventually turn it to condos or some sort of real estate development. And basically, in a nutshell, I bought the property in August, and they gave me special permission to continue to use as a landscaping building, and that's what I was hoping to do rather than have the stuff stored at my house. So, yeah, basically, since I've had the place, I've just, you know, as I'm fixing it up, the fence on the east side of the lot, yeah, the east side, stops about 50 feet short of the lot line. And I'm not looking to go all the way to the lot line, but I'd like to increase the fence about another 40, 45 feet so that I can still put landscaping on the outside of it to shield the fence. But in regards to the current R5 zoning, I can only have the fence height, I think, in the front, I thought it was two-and-a-half feet, yeah, 30 inches, and then the side, six feet. But the existing fence is seven feet currently. And some of the issues I have with that is just, number one, it's a security issue. I really can't have people, you know, being able to jump a two-and-a-half-foot fence and getting into my commercial property and... Another, there's quite a few items why it would be beneficial to have it. You know, basically, I have a lot of workers that are parking on the street currently. It'd be great if they could park inside. In fact, last week, someone hit one of their cars, so I was hoping that, you know, having that, a spot where they could park right now, the lot, the interior is a little crowded because I'm still getting rid of some renters from the previous owner. So that's kind of the second thing. A third thing is really the aesthetic value of the little grassy knoll there is, you know, I could do a lot more with the property and make it a lot prettier. Basically, for some reason, it's like a wind tunnel and everything seems to blow down, all the garbage seems to blow right in that area. And some other thoughts I have, if I put the fence there, I would also, to the east of my property is kind of a swell where it's always muddy and stuff, and that would probably prevent people from cutting across the tracks there as well, which I know people do because there's kind of, I've seen like, almost like a little path across up the hill there. And outside of that, I can't remember any other points I have of why I'd like to do that. I have actually gone to my neighbors currently and talked to them.
It'll go on automatically.
Okay. Maybe I just turned it off. And everyone that basically lives across the street from me is, excuse me, has, I just wrote up a little note, they've all, they're all on board. They don't mind at all. They're all for it. There is no line-of-sight issue because oak comes into Quincy there and it tees, so it's not like I'm going to be inhibiting people from seeing or getting in a car accident. And basically, I'm just really all about fixing up the property and making it look nice and having it usable for my business. And I'm not looking to, you know, if you guys want to turn it to condos, I understand that, but for now, I'd like to make it as usable as possible. And do you have any of the pictures or should I even present those or...
Can you show them from the staff report?
Okay. There you go. This is the front. Is there one that's signed?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, this picture doesn't... Keep going in reverse. All right, this picture doesn't really encompass everything very well because it kind of shows that swell. But basically, right and up and along here is basically the grassy area that, there's really no landscaping there. I did plant two oak trees last fall, but I do plan on moving those. I'm not just going to cut them down. They're very movable, so... And, you know, I could even do your lilacs. Although it is probably a little bit moist there, but, yeah, I just, I've had a lot of plants. I'll tell you, the place was kind of in a state of neglect when I bought it, and, you know, with the road going in and, I mean, even, they didn't even finish all the seating, which I did myself, across the parkway from the construction. You know, I have tons of clients in Westmont. I just want to make the place beautiful and, like I said, very usable for my business. That's pretty much about it.
Does staff have anything?
As Mr. Griffin has mentioned, he's worked with his neighbors, and he's looking to screen their view of the materials on his property. The pictures don't adequately note how much landscaping he has planted outside the fence. It's very mature and is working to additionally screen the property, and this shouldn't have any effect on the vacant lot to the east.
And I'd also like to add this comment, since the village has rezoned your property, in essence, you've got 50-foot of land that is unusable to you.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, so it makes a very good case for a variance. Okay, anybody from the public care to speak on this issue? Close of public comment. Let's start with Commissioner Fidesco.
Yeah, I've been by the property numerous times, and I think what you're trying to achieve is something that's good.
Thank you.
So I think that having a commercial site, you need, absolutely need, the taller fence for security. And understanding why we have what we have is because it's been rezoned. So I don't have any issue whatsoever with your request.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren.
I would echo Commissioner Fidesco's comments.
Commissioner Ran... Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Anton?
Off fences. I'm in.
Commissioner Pill?
I think it's a great thing. I think you provide a nice buffer along the railroad tracks with that type of business, and I think it's a great thing. And I'm particularly impressed that you went and got the signatures of the neighbors. I want to give you a lot of credit for that. That makes our job so much easier. I'm behind it 100 percent.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
I echo. Welcome. Good luck.
Okay, well, I was out there today, too. I was quite impressed with the landscaping. All the stuff that's along the eastern fence now, all the bushes, you could probably just transplant them, put them...
Yeah, there's some, there's some dogwoods there. I mean, they are mature, so I'll see how well they transplant.
Yeah.
If they don't transplant well, I definitely want to get something of an established size so that it will, I forgot to mention this, but what I am planning on or hoping to do is continue the privacy screening, which are the slats. But, yeah, to be honest, I have plants sitting in multiple places where I've actually planted on the reverse side and hope to actually, I know it's railroad, some of it's railroad property, but to make it nicely viewable from the train, too, in terms of, you know, mature trees rather than looking at the backside of a fence and a bunch of weeds and stuff. But, yeah, I definitely want to, I mean, this is basically my showcase, so I want to make people see, you know, my sign and see beautiful landscaping and say, they know what they're doing.
Yep.
So I definitely plan on making the external part, I'm actually excited about it. It's not that I don't want to cut more lawn. It's, I'd rather have the nice plants and trees to go along the sides.
Did you put the slats in the cyclone fence?
The previous fence was put up before me, but there's some extra material left over that would encompass the slats.
I like those slats, the narrow ones instead of the wide ones.
Yeah.
It gives it a little bit of an openness. And the only real question I have, what kind of tree is that that's on the east with the bark that peels?
On the east with a bark?
On the east of your property, on the 50-foot.
The very far east? I mean, there's a willow in the front that won't be infected by...
It's midway from the street to the tracks.
Okay, there's two there. There's a shingle oak, which they actually used to make shingles for roofs out of. That's closer to the fence. And then there's one a little bit further. I think that's the one you're talking about, which is a white swamp oak.
A white swamp oak.
And that would probably stay close to where it is because it likes the water, so in that, like I said, that area, that swell is pretty moist.
That's where the bark peels, almost like a paper?
Yeah.
Quite distinctive. Are you going to not pave this, I hope? Are you going to continue the stone?
Yes, yes. No, the interior will not be paved.
Okay. Yeah, I really like what you did. It looks, you're to be complimented. The whole thing looks very nice.
Thank you.
Especially compared to that old material service yard that's up there.
That's my building supply.
Should be torn down. Okay.
I don't think you have, I don't think he's making much money from what I've heard from him, so it might happen sooner than you think.
Since we have a variance request, we need a reading of the findings of fact, if we could, please.
Sure. Findings of fact for Griffin Landscaping at 2222 East Quincy Street for a variation to allow an increased fence height of seven feet. Criteria number one: The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The property is zoned R5 residential and is only permitted to have a three-foot tall open fence along a street. Applicants seek to extend an existing seven-foot fence along Quincy Street in order to provide security and privacy and screening for its landscaping business. The three-foot fence would not serve any useful purpose in protecting and screening the applicant's business, and the applicant cannot yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two: The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. A seven-foot chain-link fence with slats currently exists on the property. The extension of this fence will provide additional screening for the benefit of residential owners to the south. This fence will also provide security for the applicant's equipment and materials stored on the property. Criteria number three: The variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed fence will continue and extend an existing seven-foot fence along Quincy Street. The existing fence and the proposed fence contain landscaping to soften the appearance of the fence. There is no sidewalk on the north side of Quincy at this location. Given applicant's business use of the property, the proposed fencing is appropriate and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement on the findings of fact, which are hereby adopted. I... Under planning and zoning item 12-012, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees. Item A, zoning code variance request to increase fence height from three foot to seven foot. Item A, zoning code variance request to increase fence height from three foot to seven foot.
So moved.
Second.
That's motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fedesco. Question on the motion, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fedesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval and staff can tell you when you go before the Village Board.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good luck to you, sir. Next item, Planning and Zoning 12013, Michael Beannick of Laurel.
You can just say LCC Law.
Yes, okay. On behalf of Vigilant Global regarding the Marriott Hotel property located at 3500 Midwest Road, Oakbrook, for the following. A, zoning code variance request to permit more than three antenna on a structure in the B3 Special Business District. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Mike Beannick. I am with a company called LCC Law. We represent Vigilant Global. What we are proposing to do is put two dish antennas on the existing Oakbrook Marriott roof. As you know, there's several wireless carriers' equipment up there, and what we are doing is this will carry for broadband signal. Currently, the technology in the wireless industry is being overrun by all the broadband, so there's a lot of companies coming out now trying to enhance the broadband signal. Vigilant Global is one of them. And they basically, what that does is that frees up some of the broad, or the spectrum for the regular wireless signal, so it enhances both the broadband user as well as the wireless user. So, what we're proposing to do is place two six-foot tall dish antennas on sleds up on the roof, and then the equipment that supports that will be in the penthouse. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Okay, let's see if the public has any questions. Does anybody here care to discuss this issue, for or against? We'll close the public comment. Let's start with staff, do we have anything?
Colocation of telecommunications equipment is generally desirable to avoid the appearance of additional cell towers. The applicant has demonstrated that the existing roof is substantial enough to hold the additional equipment, and there should be very little visibility concerns from the public. No other comments.
Thank you. Let's start with Commissioner Thomason.
Staff just answered both my questions. With the six-foot tall device, I was wondering about weight and that, and apparently that's been checked out. And it's also such a big apparatus, you wouldn't want to see it either, so that's another thing that was answered.
Certainly. And we did provide both the structural analysis as well as photo simulation showing what it would look like before and after.
You're not the first and you're not going to be the last requestee to for this type. That's all I have.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes, I think it's a good idea, keeping them together, and that's a well-hidden location. I think that's the perfect spot for it. The rest of the points, Commissioner Thomas in his customary fine manner, his due diligence has already covered, support it 100%.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anton?
No questions.
Commissioner Van Buren?
No questions.
Commissioner Fedesco?
I just have one, it's just curiosity, where's the other end? Because these are point-to-point.
Right, they are point-to-point, I'm not sure exactly, this is a new, Vigilant Global is new in this area, so they're tying into other sites, and I don't have that information.
I'm just curious. But, no, I see that the antenna has a radome, so there's less wind loading. I don't have a problem with it at all.
You say that they are point-to-point, but do you also serve individuals off of each antenna, or?
Yes. What the commissioner was referencing is the point-to-point is the signal. It's not the same as a wireless signal, but what happens in a wireless signal is you have all these cell towers, and as you're driving along, one hands off to the other. That's kind of what this does, you have, it is a beam that connects to other sites, and then it goes to a hub equipment, and then that's what generates the signal to the public.
I see.
So, it's not actually the drums that generate that signal, it goes to other equipment that services it.
And you alluded to these antennas are going to be on sleds, is that just a platform, or?
Yeah, it's basically, I've got, in the drawings, it shows the way the sleds work, they're basically a little platform, and then they have an arm that sticks up in the middle. The dish mounts to the side of the part sticking up.
Okay.
It gets ballasted that way so that, you know, it doesn't have a tip factor.
Now, I've only had this paperwork since Friday, I didn't get home for vacations since Sunday, so I haven't been able to check all your arithmetic.
Is that the structural?
Yeah.
That's definitely not my arithmetic.
Maybe we could review that as a group after the meeting.
Apparently, the chairman hasn't stayed on vacation long enough.
But it impressed me, anyway. All right, since we have a request for a variance, may we have a reading of finding of fact, please?
Yes. Findings affect for Vigilant Global at 3500 Midwest Road for a variance to allow more than three antennas on a structure. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The property currently contains 16 antennas on the roof of the hotel. The applicant seeks to co-locate its new antennas and equipment with the existing antennas and equipment. Without this variance for this location, the applicant would be forced to place the antennas on another tall structure in the immediate area if possible, or construct an antenna tower to accommodate this need. Since colocation of such equipment is desired by the village, the property cannot yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant seeks to co-locate its equipment and antennas with existing equipment and antennas. The proposed facilities will be set back from the roofline and utilizing this location may avoid the installation of a new antenna structure. Criteria number three, the variation if granted will not alter the essential character of the locality. Existing antennas and equipment are present on this roof. The equipment will be set back from the roofline so as to minimize its visibility to surrounding property owners, and these two additional dish antennas and equipment will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. The findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under Planning and Zoning Item 12013. A zoning code variance request to permit more than three antenna on a structure in the B3 Special Business District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fedesco, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, sir, and then staff can tell you when you'll go before a committee of the hall.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Planning and zoning item 12014, Ismael Akel of Cake in a Box regarding the property located at 17 East Burlington for the following. A, zoning code variance request to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls for the purpose of opening a clothing and wireless accessory retail store in the B1 Limited Business District.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening, sir, I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Akel, ankle, whatever you, doesn't matter. Okay, I'm here to request a parking variation at 17 East Burlington. Right now, there's currently a hookah bar there, Yokohama Restaurant, and a nail salon. I'm looking to open up a retail location called Cake in a Box, which is basically clothing that comes in cake boxes. The concept is called Cake in a Box, I'm not going to get too much into it, I guess, because it's for parking. But the store will be set up basically like a bakery. I don't know if it zooms out.
You'll zoom out.
They should zoom out and? He's stepping back. He's very shy.
All right, basically, the building was built like over 40 years ago, at which a time was like not stringent, you know, today for parking. The building doesn't have a basement at all, or, you know, anywhere that the current owner can build any additional parking. And when we signed the lease, I thought, okay, there's a public parking lot, and, you know, a few spaces in front, we're in a retail location, downtown Westmont, you know, you just sign the lease, you go in, you open up a business, that's what I thought, but apparently, you have to request more room for parking. There would be like two to three employees right now, which is me and my wife and one other employee. I feel that a substantial amount of clients or customers will be basically the people walking around or live in the area that usually come around Westmont. Foot traffic, people getting off the train, and that's basically it. The concept of the place is basically to attract mothers for like clothing, baby blankets, baby clothing, hats for that crowd, which is the mothers, babies. And then there's for women, girls, women, whatever, we have all type of clothing for them. And men, urban wear, suits, belts, that's basically it. When you walk in, there'll be like a bakery showcase. I don't know if you guys are familiar with a bakery at all, but when you have the baker's rack, each shirt that we make, or jacket, or belt, will be like 100 limited items, or 100 jackets, 250 t-shirts, socks, et cetera, and then they'll never be made again. There'll be a baker's dozen where the store keeps one for, you know, a collector's item, and the rest will be distributed out wherever, on the internet or at the store. So, we'd like to use it as a showroom, and I know that Westmont is like a passing zone for a lot of people. Hopefully, they'll pass by and like us.
Okay, very good. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? Okay, we'll close the public comment. The only, staff, before I ask you, you've got the ability to grant a variance if you would for up to four parking spaces? Does this space require five?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
I believe it's three or less.
Yes.
Oh, three or less. Can be administratively waived by staff.
I'm sorry, John, I, my number was wrong. Okay, Jill, do you have anything for us, sir?
The applicant is located in a multi-tenant building with very little private parking. Only six parking spaces are dedicated to the entire building, and the other tenants have either been approved to use the parking, or they have little parking needs. As John mentioned, they might have, might need less than three spaces, for example, or they've been granted variations in the past. And as the applicant noted, there's an adjacent public lot, as shown in the staff memo picture.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's start with Commissioner Fedesco.
I don't really have any issues, I understand what's going on here. I mean, pretty much, a number of locations in the downtown district have to ask for the same variance because really, we only have a limited number of spots in town.
Right.
But yet, our space requirements and number of employees, you know, that changes the dynamics of the numbers that are required, so pretty much everybody has to come in for a variance. You're not alone.
I learned that.
Okay. I don't have any other questions or concerns.
Commissioner Van Buren?
During the, you obviously are running normal day hours, probably nine to whatever. Who are, in terms of the public parking that's right across the street from you, who are you competing with? All of the businesses right there?
Oh, you mean?
For parking spaces.
Oh, no, I'm not competing with anybody, really.
Oh, no, for parking spaces.
Who's using those spaces currently? Is that your question?
Yeah. Who's using the spaces?
During the day, it's like, when I'm, when I look at it during the day, it's like dead.
It's dead, is it?
Yeah, I don't see how or, you know.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, I don't see how, I mean, the busiest time is like in the morning and at like 3:00, 4:00 o'clock. Hopefully, we're busy in like Yokohama, but I'm surprised that we even need more parking, but.
Okay, so that was, that was my point, that currently, by giving this variance, we will not be taking anything away from what is existing, so.
The public is?
I don't have a problem.
The public is allowed to use a public parking lot, right? Yeah, so, I mean, I would only be parking there with one employee mainly.
Commissioner Anton?
Yeah, I was walking across, there was a big giant parking lot, so I don't seem to have any problem with it.
Commissioner Pill?
I like the idea, I just had one sort of question. How do you plan to promote the business?
Easy. Internet is one way, and the other way is, there's two bakeries in the area. I'd like to give out, I mean, not just a grand opening, but every season, do a promotion with the local bakery, and through high schools for like a summer clothing or sportswear, and then through just businesses basically in the area.
You might consider there's a very active chamber based downtown, also a chamber of commerce, and they host ribbon cuttings and grand openings and open houses and help secure promotion, advertising, and articles and things like that, that might be a good thing to look into also.
Thank you. Will do.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
This is a no-brainer as far as parking goes, I support it 100%, welcome and good luck.
Thank you.
And as for myself, I'm very happy to see a sales tax generating business coming in to downtown, I have no problem. When I was there today, main parking lot across from you was virtually empty, I hope you fill it up, to be quite honest.
I think the only place I'd like to go now is a hookah bar.
Yeah, Hookah Bar is always busy. I'm in there all the time.
Our attorney also has a comment.
Jill, I assume this will go before the board for a development permit as well as a variance?
Yes.
And the applicant's aware of that?
Right.
And as far as employee parking, I know we've designated some spots for employee parking within the downtown area.
Okay.
So that employees aren't using the commuter, the lots.
Right.
Right there, I don't know if you've been in touch with any of the village staff about that. You can secure an employee parking permit for some designated spots, just so we're not clogging up.
You can't in the lot, or?
It's on Burlington, just west of Cass, I believe is where it is.
Okay.
But it's something to maybe speak when you're back in with Jill or with the village clerk's office, so everyone's that administer that.
I know we have one space right now from the landlord on the back of the building, which nobody uses.
You might be able to use that?
Yeah, well, we are, we can use it, because the people that work at Yokohama are usually on the bus or the train, so.
Then, only because the village board might ask this question in conjunction with the development permit, the write-up says you're also selling decorative phone covers, Bluetooth headpieces, phone chargers, and?
Yeah, so, basically, most of it's iPhone, just stuff like this, you know, have a cake written on it or whatever, it's basically your regular wireless accessories with a touch of class, I guess.
Okay, thank you, John. Since we have a zoning code variance request, we need a reading of the findings of fact.
Findings affect for Cake in a Box at 17 East Burlington Avenue for a variation to allow a reduction in the required off-street parking from five spaces to zero spaces. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The existing off-street parking stalls for the property are utilized by other tenants, leaving no available spaces for applicant's use. The property is fully improved and there is no space available for the construction of additional off-street parking spaces. Under the zoning code, no use requiring more than three off-street parking spaces could occupy this tenant's space without a variance, and therefore, the property cannot yield a reasonable return under current regulations. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to your unique circumstances. There are no available off-street parking spaces on the property, nor is there room to construct additional off-street parking spaces on the property. Sufficient public parking is available the property. Sufficient public parking is available in the Central Business District. Criteria number three: The variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Many businesses in the Central Business District are unable to provide the required off-street parking and have received similar variances. Due to the availability of public parking in the area and the hope of the applicant to capture metro commuter traffic, this variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agree, in agreement on the findings of fact for a variance, which are hereby adopted. Under Planning and Zoning Item 12014, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a zoning code variance request to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls for the, in the B1 Limited Business District.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval, and staff can tell you when you go before the village of the whole.
Thank you all.
Committee of the whole. And I hope you fill that parking lot up, sir.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning item 12015, Village of Westmont Special Events Corporation, regarding a special use for ATMs to be located at the intersection of North Cass Avenue and East Irving Street, and at the J.T. Manning Elementary School parking lot at 200 North Linden, as follows: A, a special use permit request to operate temporary automated teller machines in the B1 Limited Business District.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Rob, Treasurer of the Westmont Special Events. We are requesting for special use permits for ATMs for, during the Taste of Westmont. There's a lot of reasons why we would like to have this ATM. A lot of it has to do with convenience to the public. A lot of people don't like walking to, you know, a bank or anywhere else far away when they're really close to the food booths, or, you know, the alcohol tent. Additionally, the WSC is, is a self-funded organization, and this will bring in some additional revenue into us. It'll be entirely managed by American ATM Systems. They will have security cameras. They will take care of everything. The only thing that we will do at night is we will provide our overnight security, which we have every night from the Taste. It will not be able to be removed once it is in place. They have made sure of this, and also, the police department has also looked at this, and they said it would be a great addition. Oh. Another reason why we want to do this is because it's going to help increase spending to all parts of the Taste, whether regarding it's the food booths, beer tent, soda, and even the downtown businesses, because it will be at both sides of the event. Any questions?
Now, we'll go to the public. Anybody in the public here that has any comments? Your last chance. We'll close the public comment. Does staff have any?
The intention is of providing the ATMs is for the convenience of the public, as the applicant has noted, and to generate revenue so that the event can remain free, also for the public. And as also previously noted, the security concerns have been addressed by the police department.
All right, very good. Let's start with Commissioner Thomas.
So this is not just going to be temporary, just for the.
Just for the Taste.
It is.
Just for the Taste. It'll be, it'll be in, you know, before this Taste starts, and it'll be out by the Taste's.
I thought you just said that it was, it was going to be permanent.
It's a multi-year.
It can be removed by a thief.
No, yeah, it can't be, it can't be picked up by somebody. You know, at night, or someone, someone drives up in a car and.
You can't come.
So it's just, just for when this.
For, just for the Taste.
One of your events is going on.
Yes.
Is it just for the Taste only?
Yes.
And it's also a multi-year approval that they're requesting, so they don't have to come back every year.
So I have.
Commissioner Pell?
I think it's a great idea, because you've got to be able to give the customers what they want. If they need cash, that's how they're going to go ahead and be able to participate more in the Taste and help the revenues grow. I support it.
Commissioner Anton?
How many would there be? I mean, is there going to be five?
I think there's four on each, I guess, cart, I guess you could say, and then we'll have in two different locations. I believe there's four.
The only problem I have is anything Larry's involved with, I don't, I don't want to vote yes for. I just want to go on record.
He's not here.
He's not here. Okay, I'll vote yes for it. That's all I have. That's all I got.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah. What is the fee to the customer?
It'll, it'll be in, we were planning on putting it in, next to the food booth, so it shouldn't be too far away.
No, no. What'll be the fee to the customer?
Oh, the fee, I'm not 100 percent sure. I believe they were talking like 2 or 250, I believe. I could, I could be wrong.
Per transaction?
Yeah, per transaction. I believe that, that could be wrong as well. Not 100 percent on that.
Think it's a good idea.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I, I do have a question. Last year, the Carnival vendor had an ATM, which belongs to them. Now, would that, would they still have an ATM besides these two locations?
Yes, they would.
Okay, because I don't know, we didn't, the, I don't believe you guys, the, the special events received any, anything from that. I know that Carnival gives whatever they give, but, but that was, whatever charge they had, they were going to keep. So, so we need to be able to inform the people, the different rates, you know, just so that they, you know. They know that if they're going to use, if we publicize that it's 250, or $2, or whatever, that, that it's only the ones that are the special events corporations' ATMs, and identify where those are, and the other ATM is a Carnival vendor's ATM, and that there may be a difference. You don't necessarily have to put what their rate is, but there may be a difference, so that they are aware of that. I don't have any other questions or comments.
Okay, the only question that's been brought up and made me aware of, your ATMs, are they going to give receipts?
They should.
For each transaction? Are you going to have a wastebasket close by?
We can put one there.
So that, for each ATM, so it goes in a wastebasket rather than all over the ground?
We can put one there.
All right. You may need a couple.
Not a problem.
With a shredder on top.
We hope.
Well, I mean, you're going to have two, two machines on one side of your trailer, two machines on the other, so wastebasket between each one, and then over by the, by the Carnival one. Okay, that's all I have. Since we have a special use request, we need a reading of findings of fact, if you would.
Mm-hmm. Findings of fact for the Westmont Special Events Corporation regarding the intersection at Cass Avenue and Irving Street and 200 North Linden, to allow automated teller machines in the B1 Limited Business District. Criteria number one: That the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Interior and exterior ATMs are common throughout the village, and by their nature are not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed ATMs are for a special public event and are aimed at providing a public benefit rather than a detriment. That the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The proposed ATMs will capture existing pedestrian traffic during a special event, will not generate adverse noise, light, or odors, and will not impair the use and enjoyment of surrounding properties. Criteria number three: That the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. The ATMs are removable and will not impact future development of surrounding properties. Criteria number four: The adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Temporary electrical connection is available and will be provided to these ATMs on days of the special event. Criteria number five: That adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingressing, egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The ATMs will be located within a special event area and will capture existing pedestrian traffic. Criteria number six: That the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except if such regulations may in each, may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. The proposed ATMs comply in all other respects with the zoning code and other ordinances of the village. Criteria number seven: The proposed use meets the special conditions of, of special condition number two. The proposed ATMs will not cause appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety, as the ATMs will be for a special event only, and will capture existing pedestrian traffic for these events. Criteria number eight: The proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition eight. The ATM at Cass and Irving will be located adjacent to a ticket booth and will be under observance of WSEC staff. The proposed ATMs in the public parking lot will be located within a 10-foot by 7-foot trailer. Each of these ATMs will be locked and covered following the special event in order to eliminate safety concerns. The proposed trailer will be secured and unable to be towed from its location. The applicant is willing to comply with other concerns of the police department and the village board regarding security, trash, et cetera.
Okay, if you agree with this, please raise your hand. The findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted as printed. Before I ask for a motion, I do have one question. I should have thought of this earlier. John, there are two, I'm going to call them locations for these ATMs. I don't think they can go on forever. Now, what if they want to add a third location?
It has to come back in.
Okay, so this is only for the two?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
However, I would say that the request for the intersection of Cass and Irving is generalized for that intersection, so they can move the location within the intersection to what's most convenient, where the ticket booth is, et cetera.
Okay. Under Planning and Zoning Item 12015, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a special use permit request to operate temporary automated teller machines in the B1 Limited Business District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco, and question on the motion. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval, and staff can tell you when you go before the village board.
Thank you.
Does staff have any further?
Yes. Staff is sending a revised tobacco ordinance to the board tomorrow evening. Shannon said that you all would be interested in that, and so we're hoping to get that finalized Monday.
Yes, and what that does is create classifications of licenses, much like we classify liquor licenses, and we require board approval for the sale of tobacco, based on the number of licenses available. Just another way to restrict, so that any retail operation is not selling tobacco, and the village can control it a little better.
How will that be retrod, then, to the existing businesses that we already have, or is it going forward?
My guess is it's going forward. I haven't been involved in the drafting of that. Henry Perez from my office has worked with the police department on that, so I'll find out tomorrow night.
Oh, okay. We'll tune in. Yeah, please do.
I would like to sound my appreciation for all the far-sighted individuals that had the thought to bring this up in the first place.
Yes, you're here. Your Excellency.
Any further comments, questions?
They'll adjourn this soon.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Anton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.